Okay. Ms. Helms, how are you today?
I'm very fine.
Good. I've got just a little bit of instructions for you. On this, it's council concerning letters mailed and received from Chief Hill and wrecker information. If you don't mind, when we get to the wrecker information, he's requested to be excused, so he doesn't, well, he's your competition. And out of ethics, he's asking to be, to step out when you start talking about wrecker.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Everybody. Go ahead.
Council members, considering the papers that we were handed, first of all, we were handed some citations from Mr. Hill. I do not have a problem being handed the citations, but it's probably the way it was handed to us. Now, I don't mind, yes, our grass was probably high, our fence needs to be fixed, and we do have tires, but the tires happen to be mostly Italy's tires for the police car. When we finally disposed of those tires, we had a total of three, between 300 to 500 That is over the years that we have collected from Italy that we have not charged Italy for. If we charged Italy for those tires, you add that at $3 a tire, that's $1,500 that we would have collected. But nicely, we did not. I do not have a problem, as I said. If they were there, fine. I'm glad that you brought it to our attention, is the way that it was presented to us. Again, I did not have a problem. We fixed the situation, or we are trying to fix the situations that we have. Next item up is about the wrecks.
Okay. Councilman, you have three? You requested to be ready.
I have received a letter from Mr. Hill through the mail that we were taken off rotation. Basically, flat, straight.
Ms. Smart, do we have a copy of that letter?
I believe, I do, in the...
Is that in her pocket?
No, sir, I can give you one.
Please do. When she gets that copy of that letter, would you make one copy for yourself to make for the council members, and so we can move quickly, a little bit more quickly? Chief, do you have one of those letters with you, or is it in your files somewhere?
Pretty much, just one sentence.
Ms. Helms, would you approach? This letter, you know, reference to? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we received the letter. After I received the letter, I went and asked for a request. The information that I requested is I would like to know why, what complaints that were issued against us, for us to start to receive the letter. I also requested complaints that were filed against Harris Wrecker Service. I also requested the tow procedures and writing ticket procedures. The next day, I requested an audio/video of the day when we were handed the code enforcements. After I received this letter, I also sent over a notice requesting in writing to know why we were taken off rotation. I had not received it as of right now, but I had to find out in the Neo-Trib exactly why we were being taken off.
Neo-Trib, yes.
The newspaper that the South, Monolithic...
It's an online newspaper.
Yes, it's an online newspaper. And according to what he has told my cell for the Neo-Trib, which is the online newspaper, is that we refuse to do service for Italy vehicles, the police department. As of right now, I had only received three complaints. They were in 2012. But I have a feeling which day that we were talking about that we were taking off. And I remember the conversation very lightly, and I will have it requested from the dispatch on that day, which was exactly done.
Chief, who does the county do our dispatching?
They take our phone calls, they do dispatches. That's Ellis County Dispatch.
Control. All right. I just make sure that...
You have to go through them to get any information from that.
Go ahead, Ms. Helms.
I remember when Mr. Pitts called the night, he had a flat tire. He was at 100 Main Street. I convinced the ass dispatch if he had a spare. He did not. He also asked, he thought that we had tires for them. We do not. We had put all the tires back into the police cars along with their jacks. So, I convinced to tell them that I could not get into the police barn, so I would not have been able to get the tire. I would have been able to tow him, but he said to get Harris wrecker. So I left it at that. Sometime in June, between the 21st and 24th, we were called out that morning for Officer Stevens.
Them again, this year.
This year. I had went out on the call that morning. They had a tire there, but he had parked on an incline. I did not feel it was safe for me to change the tire on the incline, because also on the other side, the tire was already showing bald and wear on it. So in the safety of the officer, I towed the vehicle, I towed it back to our shop, because that's normally where I change the tire. That morning, Mr. Hill called me and very brutally asked me why I towed the vehicle. I convinced to tell him it was on an incline, it was unsafe, I did not feel safe to change the tire there. So I towed it back to the shop. He convinced to tell us, well, to change all four tires. So I felt at that time I had made the correct decision. Only problem is, if they do not keep spares in their car, how am I supposed to change their vehicle, the tire? He would probably not want us to tow them, since the way I was treated on June. So I did the choice of, I could not change the tire, because he did not have a spare and we did not have an extra tire on that day. Now, all the other refusals, like I said, was back in 2012. Every time that we receive a call for them officers for us to tow, or to assist with cars, or if people are hurt on the side of the road, we always answer our phone calls. We always go out and serve them. We have never, ever told them that we would not. But since the last time in June, when I was called by Mr. Hill and basically jumped on for towing a vehicle that I thought was unsafe, I took the decision not to tow the vehicle this time, when I was called for a tire change, because I did not have one. I am sorry. I don't know what else could be said. I also requested some more information from the police department. I had not received them, I received a letter from the attorney's office to give me a price on what it will cost me to get that information. I was also told by a person today at my meeting that I went to, that I need to call the attorney general's office, and that is what I will be doing tomorrow. I feel like there's a roadblock for information that I have requested. I've had some evidence showing that we have answered most, all calls, that we have been called out on. I have some proof where I'm showing that the other wrecker service has not answered all calls, because when he does not answer them, then we get caught. And we go out and build that need.
Is this the letter you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're on the same page.
So, my question is, is when we were first put on rotation, for Italy rotation, we had to come before the council to have that decision. My question is now, why all of a sudden it's not put before the council to take us off? Why was it Mr. Hill's decision to take us off rotation? That is my question to the council. We have tried to help the city, we have tried to do as much as we can, which costs us money. We have never really asked the city to compensate for what we have lost. There is many times that we have gone out and changed the tire. I have not charged for changing the tire. I have not charged several times for fixing the flat on the tires. Now, regrettably, I wished I had.
Corporal Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask, you did your, first, would you come here and get this letter and pass it to the citizens out there, so that we know, so at least they have an opportunity?
Mayor, do you also want to make copies of the three letters from the officers that we gave to town wrecker service?
Uh...
Since it is relevant?
Yeah, that's...
And pass that around, please?
I don't have that.
Okay, she does.
I didn't know that existed. May I see it, Ms. Helms?
And I can go get a copy out of my office, too, if you need it.
Please, don't get your copy.
If she has it there, then...
No, you see.
Email address.
Oh, I have it.
You want me to make copies?
No, if she has any copies. That's what she asked for, open records, and that's the complaints that were made to me. So if you're passing around the other one, what do you mean? I didn't know, I didn't know either.
We want the citizens to have all the information.
Do you have any copies? Ms. Cochran? I ain't bothering you. Would you make, just four copies of this, and after that, make some more copies for the citizens?
She says things that I can't understand in regards to getting tires and the spare.
Is it still raining out there?
It's done.
Streets didn't flush?
It's not raining on the technical table.
It's not?
The technical table, the ground. Yeah, the city, the city.
I want to thank most of the Public Works employees that showed up tonight, Police Department employees, and Administrative employees that showed up tonight. Go ahead, Ms. Helms, we'll get the copies in just a minute.
That's pretty much all I have.
That's pretty much it?
Mm-hmm.
Clear me out, while I get my best information, you still looking for?
Complaints against Harris wrecker.
There are none? No.
Then that's about 10 years. Same amount of time, same amount.
So we're talking about what, duration time?
Two years.
Two?
Since I've been here. She stated that she got a letter from an attorney. Is it our city attorney, or the attorney was it?
Yes, sir. I believe. Yeah, could you approach her, this is a copy of the letter? Are they both the same? Take the paper. Ms. Helms? Okay, we're going to reconvene here. Just go ahead, Ms. Helms. Anything else?
That's it.
Does any council member have any questions for Ms. Helms about this, about this letter? Took a few minutes to read what you need to read.
Mayor, if I'm almost, must also add on this, is that if there are any concerns by the city council about whether or not we're just throwing all of our business now to the Harris wrecker service, that's not true. We, last week, we added Paul Martin's wrecker service to our rotation, so that way that there's no implications that we're doing anything to help out a council member or whatnot. They will get our service.
I was just reading this, I was just reading this letter right here.
Yes, sir.
What, so, so we're not using any wrecker service here in Italy, we're using all Martins from outside?
No, sir, we added Paul Martins.
I'm just asking a question, council. I'm just asking.
I just said he was using them, I mean, houses too.
Okay. The public doesn't see what I'm seeing. I was just asking.
Yes.
To get clarification. Go ahead.
But yes, we still have two wrecker services, one is Harris', and one is Paul Martin's wrecker service. That way, there's no implications that we're, you know, just trying to get certain person off the business.
I don't understand, I don't understand, I really don't understand, how many years have we been using both wrecker services, Helms and Harris?
I know, since I've been here, at least two years.
Two years?
Yeah.
Ms. Helms, how many years before that were y'all using?
I believe we started using wrecker service in 2005.
Quite a long time.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I don't mind asking, I don't understand the, I don't understand this.
I also have officers that are in here...
I know, but I'm asking you, I just don't understand the, you didn't discuss any problems before with Helms Garage or wrecker service?
Well, I mean, they're fully aware of the issues that were presented, of the issues there, but before, before I got here, they were...
Hang on one second. Now, go ahead and discuss how the problem... I apologize, that was a lovely bride, just calling, and usually there's something wrong.
You want to come for a recess, Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir, please.
I have to make a motion, make the, take a 10-minute recess.
She didn't arrest him.
Seven, seven, I'll in pleasure. Take a 10-minute recess.
Sometimes, these meetings are a little bit lengthy, appreciate everybody's patience. We, we're all one here, we're all one city. Frank, did you need to stay in the stretch for anything? Or wait till... Keep going, okay? Okay. Oh, that's right, okay. You ready, we're going to reconvene, is that all? We reconvene 7/24. Okay, Chief, worry worry, I'm sorry for the...
I'm sorry, I don't know.
We were discussing, I believe, this letter. Had you not talked about the complaints about them before?
With Helms?
Yes, sir.
No.
Okay.
I didn't, the officers didn't.
You know, we've got two wrecker services here, and it's kind of my contention that unless they're just blatantly wrong in doing whatever they're doing in the process of their business, these people pay taxes.
Well, if you'll let me speak...
I will give you, I will give you an opportunity, just a minute. But, I mean, does council members agree with me that they are a local business, and I'm just now getting this letter from a business in Waxahatchee to come down here to do our business? Is that what y'all have?
Yes, we are there.
Okay. One moment. Chief, stand and let us, fill us in, what's going on?
Okay. Well, city council members, here's the thing, I have to be given the opportunity to make operational decisions based on the betterment of our department. Before you, you have several complaints, that's just the ones that were written. There are several other complaints that were actually verbal to me about their inadequate service. My deal is, is that, yes, they are a local business, and if they were doing the right thing, like they should be, I would love to have them on as our rotation. But I have to think about officer's safety and the safety of the citizens first. If they can't get there and take care of an officer that's abandoned on the side of the road, and get them back out on the street, then I think that that's a concern for all of you as well. And that should be dealt with. I dealt with it in a manner that I thought was best. It's been a long time coming, since I've been here, I've received complaints. You can see on there, it dates back to 2012. Again, that's just the written ones, not the verbal ones as well. So my deal, my situation is, I have to make that decision, it's a hard decision to make. But also, Paul Martin's is right next door to us, they're not just out in Waxahatchee. They have a wrecking yard right here and wrecking service here, just around the corner. It's not like we're reaching out and further outside of Italy, they're right there for us. They promised us a valuable service to our city. We, as far as the spares are concerned...
I can't hear you for the, people out in the hall are disturbing, could y'all hold it down just a smidgen? Thank you, thank you.
As far as the spares are concerned, we've had no problems whatsoever with Harris Wrecker Service in dealing with our situations when we've had flats. We've never had those issues. They've always been able to take care of us. Paul Martin's has made that same promise to us, and I feel like that we should give them a shot, being the wrecker service. The bottom line is, is that you tasked me with an opportunity, or the authority to be able to deal with daily operational issues, and that is one of them, and it's of major concern. So that's why I made that decision. There are no verbal or written contracts with any wrecker service, that goes for Harris Wrecker Service as well. Ms. Helms has brought up the fact that Harris Wrecker Service has, she claims some unreliability, but the thing about it is, is that they can actually claim different times when Helms' wrecker service has gone out on their weeks that they've taken toes for us before. And they never complained to us or said anything about it, they just go with the flow. So, my deal is, is the bottom line is, I have to be able to make a decision that's betterment for our department, that's what I've done. I hope that you understand that and you stand beside it. I would do it again the next day if it need be. Thank you.
I have one comment. I've never complained without Harris Wrecker coming out on our calls. He's never complained about us, but what I do complain about is when you hear over the radio that he refuses to do a tow, and then he's called 30 minutes later, and then he does the tow. Get me wrong, I do have a problem. I do have a problem with it. Because the problem is, is nine times out of 10, he's there in town, he just refuses to come out. There has been many people that we have towed and we have done things for. I have records stating, and it's not for his week, we were called out because he refused to do the tow. It wasn't that he's been called on all of his week, it's because he refused to come out. There is a difference.
City council, I don't hold any situation of that, and of course, Rodney's not here to be able to say that.
Well, we're not, and he doesn't, he doesn't want to be involved in this.
I understand that.
For ethical reasons, I'm going to open it up to the council again, and then I'm going to open up to any citizens' questions.
Mr. Mayor, I've used their services on three or four different occasions, and I find them just extremely good.
Help me out here, Mr. Little, which one?
No problem.
Which one?
Which service?
Which service?
Helms, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I guess my concern is, is...
Stand up, Mr. Foreman.
She mentioned that council voted them in for the rotation, the process wasn't really followed. If council was voting them in for rotation, council should be voting them out. So if council votes them out, then, I'm sorry, Ms. Helms, but at least the process was followed.
I've got to ask a question on that one there. Is this a city ordinance? Is this a city ordinance that we have to use, or that these two, and I'm pointing two for Harris Body and Helms Garage as wrecker service, is this a city ordinance?
Not to my knowledge.
So it's just free enterprise, and it's a courtesy that we extend to our citizens and our business, local businesses? True?
To my knowledge.
Mr. Jackson, Frank Jackson, I'm sorry, Councilman Jackson, I was going to call you, Mayor. What do you know, what can you add to this about it being in the past?
All I remember is, in the past, we decided to do what we did, we never, we never had a problem, and never had a problem in the past. But I know that now, you know, we do have a problem. Usually, we left the police chief just in charge. Well, the police chief, you know, make that decision on his own. So we never had this, we had this problem before.
The council was never involved in it? I don't know. Mr. Jackson, Frank Jackson, uh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman Jackson. I was gonna call you, Mayor. What do you know, what can you add to this about it being in the past?
All I remember is in the past, we decided to do what we did, we never, we never had a problem, and never had a problem in the past. But I know that now, I, you know, we do have a problem. Usually we left the police chief just in charge. Well, the police chief, you know, make that decision on his own. So we never had this, we had this problem before.
The council was never involved in it? I don't understand why the council needs to be involved in it again, unless it comes to the point that... I, I believe that, don't we, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we put up here shop idly first? Only signs?
We always did.
We always do.
But like I said, the, uh, the police chief, that we always, whoever was the police chief?
Yes.
They always decided who they wanted to use.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate that one, but I'm just gonna, I'm gonna...
Can I make a comment?
I'm gonna, I'm talking right now. Uh, please. I would like for you, Chief, uh, the Helms', wrecker service, and, uh... Well, it's, it's Harris, Harris Wrecker Service. I don't think that we need to go out of town, just because we have some problems as minute as these. That's, that's my, that's my opinion, and that's what I would like to see happen. And if you have such a terrible rapport, or whatever you wanna call it, with, with Keith and/or Ms. Helms here, I think we need to discuss it behind closed doors in executive session of some sort, because they are business owners. They do live here. They, they're part of the city, they're part of us, they're part of you. They're not?
Mayor, let me, let me ask, pose a question to you, Mayor.
I did ask the question, they're not?
They are a business in town, but let me pose a question to you. If you go to Subway and you ask for a specific sandwich over and over...
Chief, I'm not on trial here.
Okay. I'm, I'm trying to give you information to make a decision.
Okay, go, go ahead, I'll leave you a little ad to...
Let's say you go to Subway and you, you order a sandwich, and they make it wrong every time. Are you gonna continue to go to that, that Subway shop?
Well...
Or just because they're in the city?
You, you have a good point there, Chief.
Okay.
You have a good point. But, we're not talking about sandwiches, we're talking about these people...
We're talking about my officers and their safety, yes, sir, that's what we're talking about.
These people put your officers in unsafe positions?
Yes, sir, absolutely, one hundred percent, and I'll stand by that, and I think my officers will too.
Well, yeah, that, uh, you're the chief, and they're not gonna counter. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, you know, we're talking about, you know, the, the, the Helms. Really, the business belongs to Mr. Bobby Harris, Ronnie did work for him.
Well, I don't think that's the issue, I, that's just strictly named and whatever. Go ahead, Mr. Farmer, what'd you have?
No, I just wanted to hear the chief out on the Subway bit, I kinda wanted to see where he was going, but, uh... I, I get what he's saying, I mean, I, I agree to an extent, uh, because you are comparing two different things, but it's the same situation. Um, but what, what about putting them on probation first? And then if they violate probation, then you let them go. But you, you need to have a corrective action, or, you know, a action plan in place, you know, that way they can say, okay, this is what I'm doing wrong, let me fix it, give me a chance to fix it. If not, then they're out of rotation, and I, I think that's reasonable.
What, uh, help me out here, is it one week?
It's a week.
Bobby Harris, one week? So, it's not like, and if, if the Harrises are gone, or they're gone, the other one takes up? Where the other one's out there?
Harris took over, uh, for all of the toes until we can get Paul Martin on, correct?
Okay. So what is, is the question here, we supposed to vote on?
That's up to her, sir.
That is my opinion.
What, uh...
'Cause I remember, I remember when Paul Martin had tried to get on here once before. They voted him out, Mr. Jackson, if I'm correct. They could, they would not put him on because he was outside the city limits. And that he would not, they did not feel that he would give the correct service.
And my standpoint on this is that it shouldn't matter where they are, it matters what service they provide to us, period. Especially when we're talking about the things that I brought up. And I'm sorry that, uh, Helms Wrecker Service is a local business, but when it comes down to it, I have to make sure that the officers are taken care of, and I will stand by that.
Can I say something? How are you putting officers unsafe when they have a flat? Everybody on the road has flats, that'll put them in unsafe situations. We're not hurting the officers, we're not hindering the officers, we're helping the officers. We can't make our call when we do. Numerous and numerous times, Harris has been drinking, seen him personally, in Rocket, driving records, on calls, and will take up his slack on calls.
Mayor, this is...
Okay, hold up, hold up.
Mayor, this is not a public hearing.
This, this is not a public hearing. Keep the comments to ourselves. Do you have anything that can add to the point of what we're at?
Another point that is, we was told by Mr. Jackson, the new mayor here, that Paul Martin does not live in the city limits. He does not have records posted here, he does not have an office here, he knows why he lives here, and he said he will not let him own a wrecker service here. And that's what he told me years ago.
Okay, Councilman Jackson, go ahead.
He's not, he's, he's telling the truth, but the thing about it was, we were, I was, I took the advice of the, of the police chief. And he, I'm not, he, yes, I did tell you that, because at the time, the, the, uh... I took the advice of the police chief that was in charge. Yes, I did tell y'all that, well, the council did say that.
The council also voted him in.
Yeah, they voted him.
Why?
Not because of...
If it's up to the police chief, why's council got anything to do with it?
It was brought to the council meeting at the time.
When they put us on rotation, we were brought to the council meeting too.
But like I say, you know, he's, he's, she's telling the truth. It was brought to the council by the police chief. And the police chief made that decision of who they wanted to do it.
But also the council voted on that too.
So I think, I don't, I don't...
Yes.
I, I know it was probably for the council. They did have, but... But I could, I say, it was, it was their discretion of the police chief. You know, police chief was one, like, like I say. We put, like he said a while ago, you know, the police chief makes the those decisions, we have to let them make those decisions. And I did that, I, I can't think who was in charge, I don't know, was Shaina, was it Shaina?
Uh, police chief.
Might be Shaina. But, uh, but I know they, they brought it, they brought it before, they brought it to us and said we, this is who we want to do the, uh, wrecker service. 'Cause there was a problem with, both of y'all showing up at one, at one wreck or something like that, or... Y'all, do you remember what it was, or something about, both records were showing at the same place? It was something like that.
She comes to get this back from y'all.
Yeah, and that's what happened.
Misunderstanding, probably did that.
But like I say, and, and we had, let, let the police chief make the decision of how, who they wanted, how they wanted.
I think, if I remember right, I was on, uh, council, that is when we came up with the rotation.
Yes.
And we, we voted this as a request from the chief, that we use these two services and use them on a rotation basis. And I think that's when it all started, and that's why the council voted at that time to put them on rotation, so that they wouldn't all show up at the same time. If they had this week, you had next week, you had next week.
Well, I say, we brought both the chief, police chief brought it to them. And, and you know, that's what we did, it's then, we done, the chief, you know, make that decision.
And how, and one more thing, how are we putting officers in danger? They're not changing the flat tires. They're grown men, can they not change their own flat tire? My wife goes out and changes flat tires for grown men.
Okay, uh... On this, on this item I, we're talking about against the city council concerning the letters received from, from Chief Dyer and Hill. Put a period right there and, and discuss, did we get that? We got all the letters? Let's deal with one issue here at a time. What, what do you, what do we wanna do with, uh... We're talking about these, these that were received from Chief Hill, that was code, code enforcement, correct? Did all the code enforcement items get rectified? Chief, were you satisfied with the items that got rectified?
I know that they worked, uh, immediately on those issues. I'm not, I haven't gotten with Officer Landon yet to find out if all of it have been completed. But, yeah, they did work on it immediately.
So, is there anything we need to discuss and consider about the letters on code enforcement? Ms. Helms, does that pretty well clears up the letters about the code enforcements? Mr. Helms, you have no questions on code enforcement? All right, so moving on to the next, we're gonna talk about the wrecker information that we've, on coming with a, a decision here. It's my decision, it's my decision and what I would like to see happen. This method, I'm gonna use you as an example.
Okay.
What her comments were earlier. You know, this, this needs to be an inter-local thing. These businesses here help us. If we have one more business leave town or go out of business because of lack of participation on the citizen's side and/or, let's just say, the city's side, that's not right. And, uh... It's my opinion that, that we take no action at all, that we don't need a third wrecker service in here, Mr. Martin, to do, we've got, we've got qualified, we've got qualified wrecker right here. Mr. Harris, Harris pain body, we, I don't recall ever getting any complaints since I've been here. I haven't gotten any complaints from, from, uh, Helms', and I'm talking about personally. So that's, it's, that's my, uh, my decision is, and concern is that we not take them off rotation, keep them on rotation all right along with, uh, Rodney. Does the councilman have a comment?
Right. Personally, I have used them myself. I have, they've always showed up when I have a call for them. I've had a couple accidents, and, uh, had a truck broke down one time, and they came pretty quick too. Uh, and so as far as a personal, uh, opinion, I, I like most of them, and I, I don't have a problem with them being here. But I also, also feel a little bit like that we got, you know, we hired chief to do the job, and we kinda need to, you know, at least listen to him, and, uh, maybe, maybe table this and some little more information can be gathered, and, uh, see if their problems can be worked out. Uh, that's my opinion, though.
Mr. Riley?
You want to put that into motion?
Uh, yeah.
Well, we're, we're, I won't go. Councilman, other?
Well, I, they're a part of the city, and we need to keep as much in the city as we can, and I've never had wrecker problems or anything of that sort, but if I go to the garage, they, they jump on it. They head me out any way they can. But I believe that we should have, if we got problems with them or anything, we should have presented with them, like he said, put them on probation, see if they could handle them, fix the problems or whatever. I don't think we should have just wrote them a letter and took them off. But I do support the chief, it, it's his department, it has to take care of, so... That's about all I have to say.
Councilman Perkins?
I don't, I'm not looking at it as on a personal level, I'm looking at it as on a business level. Like Greg said, we hired chief to do a job. You know, we should...
Okay, well...
Trust his, his management and what he does, but, um, I would agree, if we, you know, if we actually table this, we can kinda all come together and, you know, get a little bit more information on it.
Before we make more, or more councilmen, after you, am I about to make another comment?
You know, like I said, I have, I've used Helms, go out for them, how long? And, uh, probably still, if something happened. But like I say, the, the, uh, the, uh, it was brought up that the chief make that decision, decision, it was by him, you know, like I said, I don't, I, yeah, I, you know, I always use, uh, Chief Helms, and, and, and they always help me out. I'm not gonna lie and say they haven't got their ass. But to me, the situation is, what, what, can they work it out? I believe that they can work it out. If they all got together, and I don't know, you know?
Well, that's what I was kinda advocating too, let's, let's not, let's not, uh, just, just cut the ropes on, on a local business here. They, they can do things that the other wrecker service can't, and they can probably do things that they can. I think they're both an asset, a tremendous asset to this community. And if we do decide to table this for a while, I would like to see it to continue on week, like, just like it has been, until we come to a decision, instead of just cutting them off and bringing in somebody else to take up the slack to replace...
Mayor, I would like to finish with...
Oh, I'm, I apologize, you want me to say something?
If you don't mind, before you make the decision on this.
Okay.
I think it's information that's very valuable before you make this decision.
Okay.
There are other aspects involving, uh, the Helms Wrecker Service. The reason I'm so, uh, dead set against using them anymore. Been a chief here for two years, and already, three times, three times, Mr. Helms has told me that the reason they have lost business is because of me. Okay? Now, let me just tell you this.
What'd you do?
I'm sorry?
What'd you do?
I didn't do anything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't do anything. He told me that the reason they're losing business is because of me, because I've changed up the towing policies and all of this. Well, I'll tell you what, I can't be concerned with making him money. Matter of fact, that's actually illegal for me to do that, if I'm going out there and telling the officers to make tow.
But I don't think that's the issue.
Sir, can I please, can I please make my statement?
Yeah, I, I will, I give you, let you, give everybody plenty of latitude, don't think that I'm ever gonna cut anybody off.
Well, you have, you, you cut me off three times so far, Mayor. Here's the thing...
I thought you were finished, I'm sorry. Go ahead. That's a really...
I have to be concerned with someone that has that kind of business attitude, okay? That I'm him, I'm helping him make him money. Well, I don't care how many cars my officers tow a month, I can't be concerned with that. And I'm not gonna be told, and like I said, three times in two years, three different times, I can tell you, he said that, that I was going to, that I'm the reason he's not making money. But the biggest reason I want you to make a decision today is because I would like Officer Pitts to tell you about the night that finally made our decision involving him, them not coming out and changing his spare tire, and what we observed the next day. Officer Pitts?
Mayor? Citizens, um, again, this decision had nothing to do with me, uh, all I do is do what I'm told. You know, if we, there's a wreck rotation, I'm gonna call whoever's on rotation. Um, we have a flat tire, we don't carry flat tires in our car, we don't carry jacks. Uh, if we have a flat tire, we haul some, whoever's on rotation can come handling for us. Um, that, that day, I came in early, I did some step. I'd had a flat the previous night, or someone else had a previous flat, I took it to Helms to get it fixed. When I arrived at Helms, there was two brand-new tires of ours sitting out in front of the shop. One of, or one of which was already mounted up, brand-new, brand-new tire was sitting out there in the front. Uh, his son takes mine, takes one back, mounts it up, brings it back, put it in the car, not a big issue. That was during the day while they were open. Um, I worked all night that night, two-thirty in the morning, I had a flat tire. They were on rotation, I said, hey, could you get Helms and Ralph to change my, change the flat tire for me? The only response I got, I don't know what their conversation was between dispatch and them, all I can control is my, my conversation with them. I said I needed a tire change. They advised me that they sent, they refused to come out because they were, they didn't have a spare tire. Earlier in the day, I was there, there was a spare tire sitting out front. That's not to say that they, maybe they didn't forget it was there, but there was, uh, a spare tire that was already mounted up, and also two other brand-new tires there. I know they have a tire machine, they could have changed it, but even if, if they don't wanna change a tire, I have to get back on the road, you know, I mean, to tow my car back to the garage, get me another squad car, or whatever we need to do to get me on the road and to keep the citizens safe, and that's all I ask. I mean, I don't care who, who's on rotation, to be honest with you, as long as I have a squad car, do my job, and, uh, help you guys out whenever y'all need it, as simple as that. I mean, they, they clearly said we didn't have a spare, there was a spare there. Again, I don't know their side of that, but it was there. I seen it, it was... I seen it, and it was there the next day. We go back the next day to get the spare tires, to, uh, take them over to, uh, Harris, and, uh, Mr. Helms had stated, oh, I just got that one mounted up, but it was the same one that was there the, the day before. Again, guys, I, I'm not here to pick sides, I care less who's on rotation.
We appreciate that.
But that was my side.
Mr. Hall, can I ask something?
You may, Ms. Mathis.
Uh, it has nothing to do with towing, not towing. They are considered a vendor, just like the copier people, just like the copy paper people. If the city council cannot allow the chief to make decisions, or Terry to make decisions on what vendors they go with and why, we've got a problem. We really do. I think it needs to be left to the department heads to decide what's best for their department, and this has nothing to do with Keith and Margaret, I love both of them. But if you start micromanaging what your department heads are doing, we all need to walk out of here right now.
Well, I've said my piece, I think that, uh, if it's gonna be tabled, it should still be on rotation until, until a disposition is...
Sir, so in open meeting, let me get this straight, you're tabling the item, but you're telling me that I have to change my decision?
No.
Okay.
If, I said if the council decides to table it, it's my lead, keep them on rotation until a disposition...
That's, but if you tabled the item, then it, it should stand.
It's gonna be up one of these four to table it, not me. I'm just telling you what, yes.
Mayor, given the present circumstance and what's going on with this situation, I, uh, make a motion that we're gonna stick with the decision that our police chief Darren Hill has made. That's my motion.
Okay, you heard the motion from Councilman Perkins to take, make a decision on this, uh, Helms Wrecker situation?
Yes, both second.
Uh, wait one second. Do I hear a second? Got a second by Councilman Jackson. All four, supportive, against? Council made their decision.